Hi all, thank you for joining us. This is the pathway to removing obstacle Chicago housing initiatives. Also known as ProShine. Public hearing. Today, we'll give you a little brief introduction over our application. But majority of the time is meant for us to hear from you and how we can strengthen our application to United States Department of Housing for urban development. For a strong application to incentivize and create more affordable housing in our city. So overall, here's our agenda for today. We'll do this welcome. Overview of the Department of Housing, introduction to the HUD pro housing grant, which is officially a grant. Overview of DOH, the pro housing application, that's what we're calling our ProShine. And then we'll move into public comment. There's a couple of little guidelines on how we can make sure we can hear from people. And just as a FYI, this meeting is a hybrid meeting, so we have people joining us on Zoom and here in the room. So when we get to public comment, we'll move back and forth between in the room and virtual. If you're joining us virtually, we do have ASL interpretation who has pinned themselves, so you can see them throughout this time. And then we also have Spanish interpretation, which you can access by going to the globe at the bottom of your screen and clicking the S manual. So we'll briefly introduce the department. Want to first hear some key agreements. Speak from your own professional or personal experience. So we want to hear what you have to say in your comment. Embrace the emergent process. So this is our application. We're not final. We're still working on this and looking for ways to improve. Listen deeply to others, anchor and respect your comments, and suspend judgment. And as for housekeeping, we want to just remind you to keep silent until your call upon. But also, if you're in person with us, the public restrooms are actually one floor down on nine. So you have to go to
Not anymore.
On two. Okay, just kidding, on two. Okay, thank you. So here's our mission, vision, and values for the Department of Housing. We have a mission to expand access and choice for residents and protect their right to quality homes that are affordable, safe, and healthy. We see the equitable distribution of resources across all 77 communities so that every Chicagoan can choose and remain in quality housing that is affordable, safe, and healthy. Our values are equitable, collaborative, dedicated, resourceful, and I just wanted to highlight the equitable part because that's a big part of this grant. So our value statement for equitable was we wanted to marginalize race, ethnicity, citizenship, ability, sexual orientation, arrest, or conviction record. So here's a big image. We want to make sure that you all recognize there's humans behind the department. So here are our DOH leadership here. And then here are your grant team who is working on this grant from the city. I'll let each of us introduce ourselves. I can start. I'm Aaron Johnson, pronouns he and his. I'm the project manager, community engagement, and racial equity for the Department of Housing. Pass it along to Steph.
I'm Central Connor. I am a project manager on the motor sheet team, project sheet for date.
My name is Matt Stern. I'm pronouncer he, him, and I am a senior program manager for the Chicago Recovery Plan Team.
And I'm Frank Su. I'm the federal funding project manager for the State of Chicago. I go by he and pronouns.
Good morning, all. I'm Hugo Casania, deputy officer to complete engagement racial equity.
So just want to make sure that we're grounding our work and why we're interested in applying for this application and what's driving our work. So in 2021, we released our racial impact assessment. This was an assessment over our qualified impact. And then we also found that most of the development was going to priority white developers and look for ways to diversify, get stuff to do to develop them. So as we said, here's kind of the big outcomes. We also prioritize data, infrastructure reporting, the increase in inclusion power and self-determination of our residents in affordable housing developments. Sure, which needs housing units and create incentives for partnerships or wraparound services. Here's kind of like the roadmap of what we've been doing since 2019 around racial equity and equity overall. I'll just highlight some of these things from our racial equity impact assessment. We also did our largest funding round for affordable housing, which was near $1 billion in 2021. We've also been strengthening our affordable requirements ordinance. We've partnered closely with the mayor's office to pass the Connected Communities Ordinance, which helps create affordable housing near transit lines. We have in this past or current QAP round, which is ongoing or under review right now, increased permanent supportive housing, which is housing that has wraparound services for people. Increased broadband capacity in our developments. And again, supporting the inclusion of BIPOC, Black Conditioned People of Color in the development of our housing and then also addressing this in environmental justice and climate. Okay, so now I'll pass it off to Steph, who will go over the federal grant overview, which is the particular grant that we're talking about applying for.
So this is an $85 million pot of money that's available nationwide to communities that can apply up to $10 million. To October 30th, these are some basic things. We really want to kind of follow the deepest targeted at updating things like outdated zoning, inefficient procedures, policies, things are internal to our own work. It can address infrastructure. It can address amenities, challenges to the housing stock. And it's for households under 100% of the area income. That aligns very closely with the support and work that we already are doing. So it's very aligned with our work. And some specific things within this grant are targeted to areas of opportunity. So ensuring that all housing, all residents of Chicago have access to the same choices in their housing. So you'll see noted throughout our application and our existing barriers. A key focus on those opportunity areas that were noted in some earlier maps. We'll show them again. So the targeted things that we will be looking at is how to reduce that barrier where all of our housing is in certain areas of the city potentially where there's less choices available to our families. You can go to the next table. So one of the on page sides, if you look on the left-hand side throughout this entire sort of presentation, there are references to the pages of our draft. If you are interested in really getting into all of the background. We have an acute demand for affordable housing. Institute of Housing Studies, that's all. And the darker areas are where you've seen more than a 10% decrease in affordable housing. So that very much aligns with that arrow community or your map on the right. Those are areas that we see areas of opportunity, both in high amenity areas, but they're also losing the most affordable housing in our city. This is a key thrust of our application because we want to ensure that we're both preserving affordable housing in those areas and creating new ones that we can maintain that need. Some of the few reasons that this exists, there's rising rents in many of these areas. There is multi-units being converted down to single. We are simply losing units in those areas, which are one of our longstanding naturally occurring affordable housing in this city. This is sort of why it's so critically important that we apply and if we are able to secure this funding, primary reason that we do this work every day. As Aaron mentioned, you do these things. We'll go through them a little bit more. We have a variety of things that are already ongoing that this grant would build on. We develop multifamily housing in two primary ways, mixed use, mixed income, and disadvantaged neighborhoods in the city, as well as affordable housing development and transitioning in high amenity areas. That's done through that QAP process every two years. And we also have a more scattered site. Single-family development that is largely sort of facilitated by Shai Block Builder, which is a new land sales platform launched in 2022 that increased our land sales, the transparency, the efficiency, and our ability to do this work in smaller sites. There's also a new kind of model that the city used for a site at 18th and Peoria, which is in Pilsen. Pilsen neighborhood is experiencing just high levels of displacement, rising housing costs. And this site was identified as one that is prime for develop existing parcel land that the city owned. This one, we went out and acquired in partnership. There was a lot of community input, stakeholder advisory groups. And this site is a new way that we're sort of conducting position and development of affordable housing. So far, it's been really successful, and this is something we'd like to build on. There's also an ongoing citywide processing improvement strategy that Mary Thompson is under his office and many of their team are undertaking to look at this, not just within DOH, which is really like our application, but across the city to ensure that the information, like the IT side of things, department buildings, TPD, which is planning and development, and TOH all work together to ensure that our processes talk to each other, that if you're a developer, you can access city services in a way that makes sense to develop. And the work we're doing here builds on that. Just a little bit, but two of the main focuses that we are addressing through our grant application are this land assembly in high amenity areas. We know that it's challenging. The cost of land is very expensive. There's added up real estate markets. The city, knowing that we're not super quick on all the things that we do, we cannot compete with acquisition in those areas. Envyism or not in my backyard, there's occasional lack of little support or community support for affordable housing in those areas because pre-existing biases or things that we know just aren't true. And there can be a lack of existing public sector landholding. So there may not be as much land available to the city to simply develop. Something as common in those areas. There's also to the point about city processes being you know, all over the place or challenging to implement. They are sometimes consecutive rather than concurrent approvals for things like environmental clearance, design, zoning permitting. Many, many steps when it comes to land development. They don't always happen exactly in lockstep. We acknowledge that. We're actively working against that. So one of the things that we are focusing on is coordination between our own agencies and other sister agencies, CTA, CDOT, CHA. Sort of another bucket of work that is difficult to clear land title in the land that we do already hold. So something that we're focusing on is ensuring that we've cleared title for anyone to develop that land. And I will turn this over to Matt to go through how we're going to address those barriers.
Great. So the next couple of slides, and this is the last section of the presentation, will talk about what we proposed in our draft application so far. So to start, we highlighted in the application and in both the executive summary and then a little bit later on that we are proposing two main strategies. And you'll notice these two strategies align directly with two key barriers that Steph just mentioned. So on one hand, our first strategy that we're proposing is to develop an inter-agency land acquisition and development approach as a city in concert with the relevant departments and sister agencies in addition to the Department of Housing. The idea behind that strategy, and you'll see that there are three actions associated with it, but I'll get into those actions on the next slide. The idea behind this strategy is to think about ways that we can work both with private sector landholders, so actually engage in the private sector housing market, as well as with our public sector partners who may have land holdings. DOH does not hold any land itself, but DPD does, CTA does, CHA does. Police, parks, et cetera. There's a number of agencies and sister departments or sister agencies and other departments of the city that do have land holdings, and we'd like to improve the way that we interact with those inventories so that we're making strategic decisions about our approach to developing land for affordable housing specifically in high-end areas. The seventh strategy, we're calling a green tape initiative. And the approach here is to really take a look at our processes and interdepartmental processes to look at ways that we can win development easier. These are things that will affect the affordable housing pipeline, but they're also things that will affect processes that don't tend to touch DOH, so things that don't necessarily have city subsidy. And the idea here is that by improving the processes that we ask developers to go through, we can increase the supply of all types of housing. So I'll send the next few slides talking about some of the specific actions we propose, strategy, two-one-one strategy at a time. So this first strategy is this land acquisition and development strategy. We're proposing to take three actions. The first is to work with the Department of Planning and Development and the Department of Housing Authority and other partners to develop a shared inventory of vacant and unutilized land across the city. This would include land that is owned in the public sector, would also potentially include key parcels that are on the ground, folks around the city are aware of, that might be prime housing targets, but are currently owned privately. And when I say on-the-ground partners, I'm thinking of our DPD colleagues who are planners for specific regions and so tend to know much more than we do at the Department of Housing about what's available, as well as Alders and Alder staff who also are very keyed in to the vacant and blended land awards. And sometimes bring that to us, because we want to be able to go to them and create a more of a transparent and bidirectional communication process. That's action one. Action two relates to this concept of land acquisition as a city. And one of the things that we are aware of is that on one hand, we already own thousands of parcels. They sit on primarily on DPD's inventory. And through a variety of initiatives over the last number of years, Warflets Program, the development of Chai Block Builder years ago, we've taken that slowdown a little bit. Sure. We have taken a number of steps in recent years to work on making that land available for sale and actually selling that land. The Department of Housing's biggest interest with selling those parcels is being able to hand them off to developers who will build affordable housing projects. And so we would like to help assist that, the acceleration of those land sales, including by clearing the title on many of those parcels. At the same time, we also want to build on the 18th and Peoria acquisition of Pilsen that Steph was talking about to think about, are there ways in which we can actively participate in acquiring parcels, assembling parcels in order to secure them for future affordable housing? We know that the affordable housing development timeline can be long. And we know that sometimes private landowners are not going to wait around for us. And so if there are ways that we can jump in, secure land, assemble it, and then move it through our pipelines to build affordable housing, we feel like that could be an excellent where we know affordable units are alive. The third grant to actually pilot some pre-development work on sites we identify through actions one and action two here. We don't know exactly what that work will be. It could be environmental clearance. It could be actual acquisition. It could be title clearance work. It will depend on what parcels identify, but the goal would be to actually be able to pilot some of this so that we can prove that this is a useful tool going forward, that we should continue to apply this to. So those are the actions we're proposing under strategy one. Strategy two is our green tape initiative. Again, three different actions we're proposing. But first is to, with the help of both city staff that we would hire using grant funds from HUD, as well as perhaps external consultants, to take a close look at DOH's policies themselves and look at ways that we can improve and streamline those policies to achieve our policy goals as a department while also facilitating the development of housing in a more streamlined way. This could include a wide variety of things, like continuing the work you've been doing, engaging with developer community to identify challenges and actually looking at documents like our architectural technical standards manual, our qualified allocation plan, and a wide variety of other policies that we put out there in the world, all of the ways that we can streamline them. By that, that may be easier to work on. Action five is a similar action, but we're not just talking about in the department anymore. We're talking about looking at the larger complex landscape of development approvals needed to build housing in Chicago. And so this is the place where the work that Mayor Brandon Johnson is beginning to launch right now, that we're very excited to engage in and partner with here, is thinking about the interaction between the many approval pipelines that exist. Housing, zoning, planning, design, environmental clearances, so on and so forth. Building permits, and thinking about ways that we can collaboratively work to align those processes better and make it easier to work with. The sixth and final, four and five will take a while, right? They're not there. Those are no easy tasks. And so the sixth and final action we're proposing is actually to hire a role at the a role that we're calling at least our application for now, an ombudsman. And the role of the ombudsman would be to serve as a resource, both to internal staff, like Department of Housing project managers, as well as to the developer community, to help navigate the complicated processes that do exist. We recognize that these processes are a barrier. They're especially a barrier for emerging developers, newer developers, and the financial risks to those newer developers is greatest, right? Because if they are hit with a delay that they're not expecting, the financial impact of that delay could be devastating. So we would like to make a resource available that assists in providing both that internal and external guidance and resource to help folks navigate the process. In the draft proposal itself is our budget. I, this text on this slide is small, certainly not expecting anyone to be able to, you know, get much from this particular slide, so I do want to sort of verbalize over it, but also direct you to the proposal itself. If you have any particular questions about the budget. But essentially, what you're seeing here is the combination of, and again, Steph mentioned that we have the maximum ambition and the maximum award is for $10 million in private funding to be spent over five, six years. And so what you'll see on our proposal is a number of city staff positions listed under strategy one at the top, strategy two at the bottom. These are program manager type positions that would be with us through the entirety of the grant to lead on the strategic development of our initiatives under the grant and coordinate the many stakeholders who will be participating, both inside and outside. The other line items, size for the staffing costs, tends to be consultant and external costs. And you'll see them kind of stepped through the process and so will you'll notice in both strategy one and strategy two, we aim to do sort of some work in year one, year two, year three, that sets us up for the sort of overall development of our approach under this program, leading into more implementation style work for later use. So for example, there's a expected expenditure for pre-development costs. And this, yes, and what I was talking about in strategy one for that third action is this idea that once we identify some parcels, and once we identify a framework for approaching those parcels to try to secure them, we actually have some costs proposed here to actually pilot that strategy in the later years of the grant. Our anticipated outcomes of the two strategies and six actions that I've mentioned are on the slide here. They include increasing our production of affordable housing units, all of the city. It also specifically includes increasing housing choice and desegregation by specifically targeting development of affordable housing in high opportunity areas that tends to be predominantly affluent and predominantly white. We also propose to streamline development processes enabled by our improvements in coordination across departments and agencies, as well as the creation of a land inventory. Improve our ability to engage in data-driven decision-making about the parcels that we pursue and the parcels that we choose to develop. And then generally speaking, improve coordination across departments and between the city and sister agencies. And then one secondary outcome of all of this work will hopefully be improved transparency with the public about the land that we're pursuing, our timelines for doing so, and our strategic choices as to why. And without, I'll turn it back over to Aaron.
Okay, so thank you all for joining us. This is now the time where we want to hear from you. We will take in your public comment. If you do have questions, we will hope to probably answer them toward the end of the comment session. But we also will be capturing your questions and hope that there's large amount of them, you can create a frequently asked questions forum that would be on the website. But yeah, so now we have public comment as a, you go to the next slide please. As I mentioned before, we will, this is a hybrid meeting, so there are people online and people in the room. So people, public comment will be limited to three minutes. In the sign-in sheet, you indicated if you were interested in doing that. So I will go through there first. We'll do one person in the room. We'll do a person on Zoom. If there are anyone on Zoom, we'll go through those first that are on the signup sheet. And if there's time remaining, we can go then through people who may have additional comments or maybe didn't select on there first. If you're on the Zoom, please use your raised hand feature, and that's how we'll go through your public comment. So the raised hand feature is at the bottom of your screen. There's a reactions button that you can click. And it'll raise your hand. It will go to your order in which hands are raised. Finally, we know that we just gave you a lot of information and you heard, you hear a lot of comments. We'll show at the, for the end, you're still taking written comments between now and the 20th of this month. So we have the QR code that you also can scan if you want to do written comments. Also, we will you can still do that if you want to. We can comment. Also, what's important for me to say is HUD requires that we send the name and organization of all people who make public comments. So if, we will be sharing that with the federal government, but that's where we plan on sharing that information. So just letting you know. I will grab the sign-in sheet and then we'll start. Okay, so we can start with the Zoom then.
So, and so the question is, can you discuss the application process and the view process and rate of detail?
So the rating process, so after the public comment has been issued and like all the input has been incorporated into our application, we will submit that via grants.gov to HUD. HUD will, which is the US Department of Housing Urban Development. HUD will review our application alongside many, many others to determine whether we are competitive across a series of different specific characteristics. If they have any follow-up updates or deficiencies within our application, they will reach out to the City of Chicago Department of Housing. We will address those. And at the end of, I would approximate maybe three to six months, we will hear back from HUD about a decision whether this grant we will hear back from HUD about a decision whether this grant has been awarded or not. After which the funds will be, um, provided to the Department of Housing to start the work. I hope that answers the question. Yes, sorry. I've moved enough, so bill your mind, not this far, just to stay close together. So, hmm, no one said yes on here that they would like to do. Okay, uh, so I could also just go down the list and then just see if you would like. So the first person I have, okay, Alan said no, so I'm not gonna, okay, cool. So Jackie Davis.
Yeah, um, so I guess my comment is just ways to strengthen applications. Um, so in strategy two, green tape initiative, something that was mentioned was, um, removing barriers for, um, developers, whether new or existing. And I just wanted to make you all aware, if you weren't already, that the Illinois Housing Council already does that. So they listen to developers, architects, a whole lot of people. And so they do advocacy, both statewide, citywide, and, um, do listening sessions whenever kind of new policy or procedures come out. So I can connect you with them if that's helpful. I think her name's Allison. And then I just noticed on page twenty-one of the handout that we received was that, um, the Western Avenue corridor was featured, and I just thought another way to strengthen the application was to use the red line extension as a, um, way that touches on almost every point that you all mentioned in your application in that, you know, land acquisition is an issue, um, working with CTA and, um, the transit authority, um. It, they've done a lot of extensive work already. And if that was featured, like I think HUD and the federal government are very well aware. Oh, um, the federal government is well aware of that project and I don't know if the award was already given, but at least it's out there. And they have beautiful maps and diagrams of all the land available and even some proposed sites, much like the diagram on twenty-two and twenty-three, page twenty-two and twenty-three. So those were the two, um, items that I thought could strengthen the application even further.
Thank you. Next I have Jessica. Do you want to make a comment? Okay, uh, Charlotte. Okay, uh, Joe Stark. Is anyone online, just, oh yeah.
I have a comment online from Steven Vance. Um, are you prepared to start work on any of the proposed tasks in a situation where you don't get any or all of the grant funds?
Um, yeah, sure. I, it's an excellent question. Um, HUD has indicated that the possibility of partial awards is, is a real likely outcome here. It remains to be seen whether they would ask us to, uh, work on all of our initiatives, um, but less, or if they would select or indicate they want to fund certain initiatives, so we would have to wait for HUD's response. Uh, Steph did mention, we expect that to occur regardless of, of this particular funding. And as both Erin and Steph mentioned, um, from the, uh, REIA a number of years ago to our redevelopment of the qualified allocation plan recently, we are actively pursuing work like this, uh, day to day. Our staff capacity to do the work day to day is frankly limited. Um, so one of the reasons we're so excited about this is it would allow us to, to be flexible on that stuff.
I guess the thing that I would add to that is that, um, the city has, um, approximately ninety million set aside in bond funding towards land development and remediation purposes. And the, the, the funding from this particular grant would really help us streamline our processes and improve and increase the deficiencies with which we, um, use this, um, corporate funding. So essentially it's about increasing the efficiency and I think we can probably, um, like essentially, yes, we, it would be, I think, worth pursuing. Um, but yeah, I'll just add today. Um, Rishan.
Just very briefly, so my name is Rishan Meenan, Director of Planning with the Chicago Housing Authority. Um, so first just want to thank the team putting this together, the work they've done. Um, and I think as Matt was just saying, as a alignment from values and priorities, um, perspective, and hopefully there'll be the resources to support that. And then I just wanted to acknowledge the Chicago Housing Authority's sort of theme that they already have been better coordination collaboration. Just going to, note that and acknowledge that.
Ashley.
Thanks.
Um, Melvin, here.
Yes, I do have a hug. And I got to share with you guys, and I thank you, you know, for putting this on. And, you know, I've been coming down here for years under Ron administration. Um, I think one, one key, uh, aspect of maybe strengthening your application, showing that you're working with new emerging developers. Now, we've built some affordable housing in Walter Bernesch Ward and Jason Hurdor Ward. Now, we shouldn't have to go to a private lender to get funding. When the city of Chicago have funding for, to build affordable housing. But we did go to get the money from a private lender just to show the city we can do it. And once we did it and completed it, now each alderman is coming out saying, man, come to my ward. Come to my ward. And with this processes going on, what we need to look at is that we don't continue with the same process of funding the same organizations. Yeah, and, and I, I had to come back, you guys know, uh, we shouldn't have to see, they always want to say, yes, not changing any names. We know who they are. They shouldn't be doing to the same, we know it is the same. And that's, and, and it's, and, and I got to be frank with you guys, that is a, a, a really difficult task and a real big problem for us and our community, taxpayers that's working on the ground with boots on the ground, trying to change lives, trying to put up these affordable housing to make sure our can, our community can be thriving just as well as other communities, to make sure that we have the ability to show guys that we can do it when we get an opportunity. So I think if you strengthen, if you put that in there, that you're working with smaller organizations, smaller grassroots groups, you know, grassroots developers, I guarantee the, the HUD is going to be with Marsha Fudge. When you guys send it up to her, she can be like, oh wow. I've been doing this a long time, very long time. And she, I'm looking at it's like, oh wow, they were, we're merging developers. Not just, just not the big companies that's already, when you look at their annual budget, they already had thirty, forty, fifty, sixty million. They don't need it, but they need to work well, they're going to afford. So that's my take on it.
Well, thank you. Um, I have Scott Henry next, right here.
Yeah, I have a, a comment. Um, the, the green, uh, tape initiative is music to our ears for an affordable housing developer. Um, and I would just say, uh, if there's a time and a place for somebody in the development community to be part of that discussion, sell it. And I'm sure there are other affordable housing developers that would be, uh, would welcome the opportunity to be part of that discussion and give you our perspective, uh, and what, what could be done to streamline the process. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is anyone on one? Carmen. Kevin.
Yes, I'll make a quick statement. Kevin Jackson with the Chicago Rehab Network. We're a coalition of mission-based CDCs. And I would echo Melvin's statement about capacity building and working with place-based entities committed to affordable housing. You know, the classic story is what you see over in Logan Square and Humboldt Park today, where the, uh, mission-based CDCs have an inventory that otherwise would not be there today because of the power of the market. But it's their ability to hold on to that. So think about that for twenty years ahead and of these, some of these other areas. And the third, I agree with Scott, the, uh, ombuds person is something that our members have been talking about, thinking through like the next five-year plan. There's been a lot of really good work on the policy side, but the, uh, there's a lot of coming up, it seems, a lot of delays and uncertainties about getting to the end of these projects and, and developments in a timely way. I'm reminded, last comment about the ombudsman role is there was a period in the daily administration where they put together expeditors with the whole intention of we're going to make sure these things get front and center and streamlined. I'm not sure that worked very well. It stopped. I'm not sure. I, I, that's my advice, maybe even recognize that that's something that should be evaluated and explored.
Um, Oliver.
No comment.
Jerry.
Yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Jerry Budweh and I'm a developer in North Lyndale area. But I would like to know if, I've been there, I was born and raised in North Lyndale. We have over thirty thousand vacant lots in that area. We've been trying to bust through the red tape to get all these lots approved. Now, what I'm hearing from you guys is that it takes up to six months to get the grants going. Why is it nowadays, I know we want everything microwaveable, I know, but why six months? There's thirty thousand lots available, not thirty, I'm sorry, three thousand lots available in the North Lyndale area, and I'm a developer, and I put in for a grant. Three thousand lots is a lot of lots to be waiting six months for each lot to be awarded. Is there anybody who's trying to sweep it up, they cut through some of the red tape that we go through? Because I know one of the lots, uh, we couldn't get the deed on it because a water bill was on it. It took about, what, four, five, six weeks? So that's holding the dice up. So why does it take so long? And is there any way to cut through that red tape?
I'm happy to respond by saying, um, we're aware, um, and, uh, some of those challenges are, are legal challenges, title challenges that do take time to resolve. One of the, uh, thrusts of this application, as you heard, is hopefully developing, increasing staff, installing capacity, uh, to address most of the challenges.
So what I'm hearing is that you're underemployed or you need a point payment? Because some of these lots has been vacant since my became, remember when they had the riots? That's been six, since sixty-five or nineteen sixty, yeah, been vacant since. When you say it takes so long, you know, that's been over, wow, I was just born, so. So it's going to take a while. So why is that? We, we need it bad. And I need a go-to person that I can go to to kind of cut through that red tape. Can you give me a go-to person? Because if the water bill is due, and the water bill was nineteen thousand, but we had to wait a long period of time, that shouldn't be. So can I get a go-to person to go to say, hey, can we get through this? Because we need affordable housing, I'm strolling into my neighborhood. And so is Carmen, and, and I know Melvin, we, we are into our neighborhood and we want to see it built. We would love for them to have affordable housing. If they're, and I'm probably getting off track, but I'm so passionate about this. Affordable housing in my neighborhood will bring down violence because people would take care of what they're on, that's an investment. When you own property, you're going to make sure you take paper off my lawn. We're going to make sure that violence is down and, and it will statistically, violence will go down. So we want to get this done and I would need a go-to person, if you could provide it for me.
Let's talk. You want to take this?
Jim, Ryan, Department of Housing, thank you for your passion, right? Thank you for your tenacity and being here today. Uh, we're also taking written comments through, for also, at least if you are here, it's often great here. I mean, but also comments that way, uh, it's exactly why we need this grant. So, um, water bills, um, are in peace, there's just all kinds of enclosures. You know, we had sold lots of these parcels, or parcels that have been allocated to other programs throughout the decades, that have enclosures that we find there, student sanitation, um, maybe finding them at the local city lots, things of that nature. So it does, does take time and you're right, it's been decades.
Yes.
Um, and this is an opportunity, it's like a clear enough, that you're talking about the single-family, uh, lots, um, that are scattered and sites throughout the, I think fourth quarter, throughout the whole city. Um, and phenomenally on the west and south side, that's why we want this, this grant, meaning higher pay levels, we can get, um, all those titles ready to go, because you're right, it's, it's not, um, advantageous to anybody to want to do development if they have to sit and wait. Um, you know, once they get a permit, they still have to are waiting for us to clear the title. Um, their buyer, they go away, as we know, interest rates are volatile right now. So every month could be a different, um, intervention for an interest rate that could kill them, could kill the deal. So we, you know, we, we. Or, um, as we stated before, we are already, it's mostly a multi-family track. Uh, that's being guided by the mayor's office right now. So we're still achieving those efforts, this would just, okay, our efforts, we would fund the efforts so we can get things done quicker and faster, um, and also more broadly, um, and, you know, and bring the sketching and, and others. But we are still working on that path regardless of getting this grant. So you know, I'd, but please, I'd best need your, um, your backing, um, in your comments, uh, so that HUD can see that there is an extreme readiness.
But we need each other and I would like a go-to person if possible.
So that would be part of potentially with the grant, we would find that person that needs those complaints. But there's more likely more than one person, because then there's more of a, more than one kind of like effort going on here that needs a lot of attention. So yeah, there's, as part of our grant proposal, I don't know if you presented yet today, but, um, but that would be a part of the budget, we'd be staffing, um, both, um, probably, you know, the permit, which I'm waiting.
And if you're looking for a point person for an issue you're having now, I'm happy to talk to you after this and, and get some more information about what issue you're having, so I can connect you to the right person.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone online? Okay, the last person I have here is McLean.
Okay.
Uh, well, that concludes everyone in here and I'm online. So if you have any additional comments that you would like to make, you can also take those now, if you just raise your hand. Go ahead.
I just, um, realized one more thing that, um, in the beginning you all talked about, uh, you know, equity and removing the barriers for disability language and, um, member services and everything. So one, um, organization I didn't see on here was Mayor's Office of Disabilities, so MOPD. Maybe just including them on, in some of these sections to talk about how their processes could also be improved along with the building department. Um, because I know that for affordable housing and most house development, they have their own review process and time period and staffing issues and staffing changes. So if disability is also included, I would just include MOPD in some of the lists of agencies you're going to look at.
Um, some of the got handouts, I, you ran out of, so is there a way to get that emailed? Uh, it's if you go to, uh, yeah, chicago.gov/pro-pro dash chi, C H I. That's all of the information. So the same thing that was up before. Yeah, and we'll also put, um, the recording of this and, uh, the slides from today also on the website. Look, you put the next slide, please. What was the email again? I mean, the website? Uh, pro-chi, it's, uh, P R O dash C H I. Um, and so here also is the QR code that is all on the website as well that you can use for written comment. Like.
Should those ones who gave comments today also write them or are they all recorded?
They're all recorded, so if you, if you have something different, was definitely, okay. But also tell, um, as Jim said, we, this helps strengthen our application when we're submitting to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, but also helps communicate the need to, um, HUD about what's needed here in Chicago. So, um, if you will have other members in your field, uh, other, um, uh, colleagues that you work with, um, that you know, but have comments on this, please encourage them to also submit, um, comments or to have them submit in your organization, comment. I would tell you what's not as helpful is a form letter, um, that people just say the same thing and change that, that's not really as helpful. Um, so if people. Um so if people can create their own, you can follow the same kind of subject, but if people have their own created.
And Scott, one of your questions was, all the colleagues in the multitalia realm, and we've engaged with Allison Lemon at IHC. So I'm assuming that she's probably going to do something, if not, I'm involved up with her. Uh she is actually one of the articles as part of our, and this is the, she did a, like, in the cranes, right? Um so it'd be nice to have her follow up um document on behalf of the organization.
Great. If there's no more comments, um we will end our session now today. Again, feel free to provide written comments until the twenty-fifth. Um you can also, there's an email address that you can also get questions. It's pro-dash-chai uh at cityofchicago.org and you can also send your comments.